We are.
Alright, so being six thirty and having a warm, I'll open the planning board meeting for Wednesday, October twentieth, twenty twenty one. And we still have to read in the Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. MGL chapter thirty A, section eighteen. The governor's batch fifteen twenty twenty order suspending imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the bridge of a planning board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No one person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time. The meeting is being recorded and within forty eight hours, we will post the link of the recording on the town's website and our other town social media pages. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the chair. Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair. Mr. Raymond Ajemian, Mr. Gene Guarino. Other members participating this evening, Mr. Geller. Associate member, Mrs. Santacangelo. And Mrs. Rojas may join us later. During this meeting, votes of the board will be taken through roll call. The following bridge of our town staff will also be participating remotely. And Mr. Jennifer De Bogren, the Community Economic Development Director. This is Jasmine Farinacci, the Assistant Town Planner. I believe Mr. Azu Antonero, Town DPW Director. Will be attending, will be attending as well.
And we also have with us tonight, sorry Pat, is Greg Tansey, our new town engineer. Azu will be introducing him later on to you as well.
Great, thank you. At this point, at this point, everybody's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. And as the items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask to use chat feature to ask the question by listing your name and address in your question. The host, which is Mr. De Bogren, will recognize the question in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu and you'll be unmuted when the chair, when the host recognizes you, excuse me. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to to raise your hand. So with that being right into the record. We have a call to order and our first public hearing that I'll open is the continuation of Sarita Way. This is a definitive subdivision. Silver Engineering Associates. So we can either have staff give us an update on this or we could have somebody from Mr. Silva's team. You know. We're going to final discussion. I think the plan on this was to kind of wrap this up, listen to any last public comment and review it at draft decision line. So is anybody from Silver's? I can't see the list.
Yeah, Larry's on.
So turn it over to Mr. Silver and then to Steph.
Good evening. Larry Silver from Silver Engineering Associates. Yeah, since at the last meeting. The board had voted to continue in order to review draft conditions before taking a vote. And since that time, there were a couple of things that came about. One was that we did secure a notarized agreement with the butter. Which was discussed at the last meeting is possibly be in a condition to be put on on an approval. We've already provided that at this time. The second item, which was basically, we were informed that there was some, some concern about Iowa dress, landscape issues. And you know, my review, just as an aside, my review of the regulations is that you probably have a little bit of housekeeping to do in the regulation because it really doesn't have a requirement for a landscape plan in the regulation portion. It's actually, the only mention of it is in a definition. As to what a landscape plan is. But having said that, there is section twenty one which talks about street trees and what street trees are are allowed and which ones are prohibited. And so we sent a letter requesting a waiver from the definition, basically, of a landscape plan. And we also provided some snippets in it which identified what the plant species are for the trees in order to meet the requirements of section twenty one. And also, we specified white pines on the on the berm, which is adjacent to lot nine in order to provide some screening to High Street from that house lot. That was the one where we had made some grading changes originally. And the reason why we did white pines is as opposed to something like an abovity or whatever is because abovities are a deer's best friend and they kind of eat the hell out of them. So the white pines actually provide screening very quickly. And they're not a favorite food of the deer. And that'll give a good privacy for lot nine. And in addition to that, which I'm not sure that it was actually shown in the letter. But it is in one of the snippets there that you can see that what we also added. And these are all changes going on that page seven. Is that we're added the driveway lanterns. So that that is the way that we are proposing to address the lighting in the subdivision itself. So you might see on those snippets, a couple of them that are shown there. They're adjacent to the driveways. But those would be the changes that we would have on the plans that that is for for signature by, by the board, should they, should you approve it this evening? And I should note too, is that the other thing that is noted that all disturbed areas will be home and seeded. So nothing will be left. You know, as a bare surface. Which does not have vegetation on it. That's all I really have and I know that the board has reviewed some draft conditions. I don't think that I have seen it. But I I'll answer whatever questions you might have.
Okay, this staff. It's the last meeting.
Um, I don't have a comment other than the decision was sent to you in draft form. Larry, I thought it was sent to office while I apologize if it didn't get sent to you. I thought it was sent to you.
I didn't see it. I was away last week, so if it got sent and I didn't see it. I'm still catching up on mail from a week ago too, so I apologize.
I think it would have been sent either Friday or Monday. I don't know which. So I don't have anything else. Azu has joined us. I don't know if he has anything to add. Azu, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
No, I'm not trying to speak. I'm just, I'm just available for questions or comments, but I don't, I don't have anything to offer.
Okay, so before we close the public hearing. Do any board members have questions? Or concerns that they have for either staff or for the applicant?
I just want to. I take it staff is in agreement in terms of the draft letter.
The decision?
Yeah.
What I plan on doing is in deliberation, we can talk about the letter.
Okay, alright, sorry.
Just, I'm just trying to get any questions or concerns about the plan itself or outstanding requirements that we feel are not met?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to address the the waiver now or later?
Um, we can talk about it now. Go ahead, show. Which, which waiver? There are, there are potentially two ways.
The waiver on the landscaping plan. That this is still brought up.
Go ahead.
Well, my thought is this, he brings up a perhaps a valid point in terms of the language that we have in our rules and it may need, it may be vague and it may need to be changed, but I'm not sure we at this point are qualified to make that decision. And thus if we have requirement for a landscaping plan, I think it should still be put in place at this point.
We, I think what we could do is if the board decides to go that way, Mr. Ajemian, we could make it a condition of approval that one be supplied by a certain point in the process.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Any other board questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification though. If you, if you decide to review landscape plan after you've closed the hearing. Are you then foreclosing on any input from above us?
I guess, I guess we would be, yes. Either that or we accept the landscape plan that Mr. Silva has provided this evening and discuss that one. It's a landscape plan. It's not stamped by a registered architect though.
I think from, well, Jen might have want to opine on that. I'm just thinking out a lot, the public hearing process. So I would tend to agree with Mr. Silva that whereas the regulations as they stand right now address, do address, street trees and things like that. I think that you could look at that and add to it or subtract to it. And then consider that once you've opined on what they're proposing. Then consider that as having met the landscaping requirement. Otherwise, I don't know how you can. I mean, you can do anything that the board chooses, but I don't know how it would be fair to any potential effect that there were parties that you are going to be receiving and reviewing a plan after you close hearing. That's all.
Well, Mr. Antonero. I, I agree with you. I actually, Jasmine and I spoke about this. Mrs. Farinacci and I spoke about this today. One of the draft conditions was that one would be, would be provided before the first building permit. And I said, that's kind of, that's kind of a moot point at that point because it's what we asked for is a, is a clearing and landscape plan. Most of the clearing of those lots and the roadway is going to be done for construction of the roadway and the drainage, so. I, I think we either have to move forward with what we have here from, from Mr. Silver and if it complies with the regulation, move forward with it. Or we have to come up with some mechanism to discuss the landscape plan at a later time. Any more thoughts on that or questions?
Well, I'll just repeat what I'm saying. I mean, I I'm not sure, sitting here right now, that we're qualified to, to evaluate a plan that an expert hasn't looked at. And the whole idea of a landscaping plan is that we have a, an expert coming up with a plan and we then essentially okay it. But now we, now what we're being asked to do is to approve a plan that may seem right, but how do we know there, there's any backing to it in terms of expert opinion?
Sorry, I missed your question, Pat.
Landscape plan.
I only was able to look at the email that was sent. I don't believe we received a full size plan. So I was able to look at the email and I don't have an issue with the email, but I'm also not a landscape architect, so. I don't know if Mrs. Farinacci sent that to DPW or engineering for review.
Again, Mr. Chairman, just and here I understand Mr. Ajemian's our, our point of view and I, and I would echo that. However. Where, where whereas landscape plan is a definition. And not necessarily right now seeing that you have to have it. In the regulations, it talks about limit of clearing. So let's assume that you were to default back to the regulations as they existed prior to that definition being added. You didn't usually have a landscape professional review of street trees. It's typical show that we want apple trees or we want cedars or we want maple. That's typically what you did. I would think and suggest that if a happy medium, if there's anything like that will perhaps be that the board look at the trees that are proposed in the context of what it, it used to do prior to that definition being added. I will suggest that a definition does not constitute a requirement. For example, you have the definition of a dead end, right? But then in the regulations on that design standards, it talks about the location of a dead end and how that dead end shall be constructed. So having a definition of a landscape plan or landscape without, without coupling that with, without coupling that with an actual requirement. And in the design standards, or at least a general reference to them. I will say that it is putting and I don't want to be a proponent, speaking for the proponent, because that's not my job or function. However, I, my, my job is to also look at it fairly as what would be required and how, what would be reasonable. So in the absence of any specific regulatory language stating what you actually want, that you're going to have a landscape and how you, how you will retain a landscape architect. What the responsibilities of the landscape architect at the cost of the applicant. I think in the absence of that the board should default to what it did prior to that language being added. But I will then, but then I would ask and suggest that the board revamp its regulations to specifically have a paragraph, a page, a two page or what have you. Stating what those requirements are. Again, if you look at the definitions, you have a definition of a drainage basin. And then in the regulatory requirements, then you have a whole four page, four pages talking about the size loop of a basin, the maximum height of a basin. About the stabilization of the basin. So you had all those. You don't have that here with landscaping requirement, so. So I think perhaps if you were going to require that and didn't want to consider the waiver that the applicant has requested, I think that probably should have been made. Of, of, of the applicant should have been apprised of that. A minute ago, two minutes ago or what have you, so. That's, I, I think this should be a basis for you to say, okay, we need to revamp our regulations. For example, on a fallout subdivision. We talked about the fact that we have to have no more than seven hundred and fifty feet in length for a fallout subdivision. Because then the drainage exemptions that we are given will now become almost like a road. So that is another thing that you need to actually so you might want to be considering revamping the regulations to address these issues that are floating out there. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Antonero. So I agree with Mr. Antonero. I think there are a few things in our regulations that keep coming back. Maybe we should schedule a meeting to fix those couple of things, Mr. Antonera, like the length of the street that somehow fell out and in this regulation. So, because I think it's a good one. I just think it's not clear. Mr. Silver, can I ask you a question about the landscape plan?
He's meaning.
So I, so I like the landscape. I like the landscape. But, and I like this, like the selection, the red maple, the pin oak and the flowering cherry. But then you basically say use anything in section twenty one. So would you be willing to just stick with those three species?
Absolutely.
Because that's more of a plan. You're saying street trees, double red maple, pin oak, and flowering cherry. Or a combination?
Well, because there was a, there was a list of approved trees. That's why I had added that. You know, to the statement is what we desire to do. You know, it's kind of funny because in this day and age of supply and lack of a product. The concern that I had when I was writing that was I was identifying three species of trees and then did not know whether or not maybe one of those has a, a problem in being supplied to a subdivision. So that's why I kind of left it open ended. But what I would suggest is that if for some reason those three types of trees there is a problem in getting them, then we would have to come back for minor modification. So we can leave it at just those three trees.
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
So on the plan, are we moving that, that language?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy, are you okay? What is?
No, I'm not. Let me just stress my point again. We require a landscaping plan from other developers. Now, what is being proposed right now may be fine. But I'm not an expert to make that decision. And as far as I understand, this has not been evaluated by a professional. It may be fine. And, and the point that's been made about revamping our high laws is a valid point. Maybe it should be, but the fact is we have requirement right now in place. So I think whether it's a professional landscaper that's evaluating this, we need some sort of evaluation before we approve this plan in terms of landscaping.
Any other board comments?
Stuck in between on this one. I could go either way. Brady makes good points, but yeah, I think it probably would be fine if we just have with it, the conditions, but it's tough one.
So early on, we made a comment that there needed to be a landscape plan. And staff gone, not true or not true.
I don't remember. I have to look back at our memo. I honestly don't remember.
Is there a way that we can handle this? Is there any way we, we think we can handle this to, to get the registered landscape plan to still move forward with the approval tonight? Or is, does staff see any way to handle that?
Well, it's Mr. Antonero's comments earlier, once you close the public hearing. You're technically not supposed to accept new information, so you can't accept a new plan that nobody's seen, reviewed, or had time to comment on. That would be doing a disservice to the public and the board, for that matter. If you close the public hearing at that point.
Mr. Silver, do you have any suggestions?
I have to, I have to mute him every time just because he has feedback, so.
Unintentional feedback. Well, you know, it's interesting, okay, because I, I, I respect Brady's comments. But I also, I listen carefully to his comments. So his comments are that we should have a landscape plan so that the town engineer and the DPW commissioner can review it. Well, he just got through saying that it has to be done by a landscape architect. So wouldn't that mean that they would be the wrong expertise to review a landscape architect's plan? So it's kind of, you know, the fact that the plantings were set aside, were established based on what we had placed on the plans. It's kind of like at the same level. To now say we have to do it in a different way. Would I would say to you, then you have to have a landscape architect that's going to be reviewing it. And I, I guess I'm just not sure that that's really what the intent is here. And, and as far as the comment about the public comment. I think that you have a public hearing open right now. I think that you could offer to to those that are part of the process here for them to identify what the considerations are that they want to make sure that are addressed as part of the landscaping on the project. So that you can identify whether or not there is something else that needs to be added or a condition placed on it at that point. But that you still have an opportunity to get input, just not on a specific plan, but on what the issues would be as it relates to those adjoining properties. We did show on the plan, by the way, that there was a ten foot, basically no touch area where you were abutting other residential properties so that they would not be removing trees right up to a property line. That's also shown on, on, on what we submitted today. It's, this is a, this is a difficult thing. I think that when you talk about landscape architect plans on a site plan. I think they have more relevance than maybe even on a subdivision. But that's my opinion.
I want to make sure we correct the regulations so it's clear, but.
Actually, Mr. Chairman. Just a point of information, a point of information. To the question about Larry, Mr. Silver is correct. That, and I think about Mr. Jimmy and Larry, for your benefit. Mr. Jimmy, it's not saying that the professional engineers review the landscape. He basically using the term professional in its broad sense, but with the understanding that a professional that would be looking at it is a landscape professional. That's what he was alluding to, not to bring it back for the professional engineering staff to look at landscape plans. So he is insisting that whatever you provide be prepared by a landscape architect and then be reviewed on behalf of the town by a professional landscape architect. Now, having said that, I want to, I want to repeat the, oh, 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 sort of, sort of added to my earlier comment. Your regulation for subdivision right now does not require or provide requirements for a landscape architect to prepare landscape plan. Now, for your site plan, and I think that's the site plan regulations, Mr. Jimmy have been conflated. You are being conflated with subdivision regulations.
Mr. Antonero, if I can interrupt, I think you're backwards. So the definition requires them for subdivisions, but not for site plans.
Right, right, but in definition you don't have. You don't put regularly, the actual regulations are in the body of the, of the document. Not in the definitions. So definitions, just like I mentioned earlier. A cul-de-sac is defined as a turnaround area at the end of a roadway. You define a drainage basin and you say what the function of a drainage basin is. But then in the body of the regulations where you have, in the body of the regulation where you have design requirements for a drainage basin. Then you touch upon that, how that needs to be done, what, how you will evaluate that, the basin. That's what I'm suggesting here, that the rules and regulations need to be expanded, modified to properly capture what Mr. Jimmy is alluding to. Right now, your regulations do not capture what he's alluding to. That's all I was saying.
Mr. Ajemian, are you okay with, if, if a landscape architect submitted this plan this evening and had stamped it, would you be okay with this plan?
No question.
How about if we made a condition that this plan has How about if we made a condition that this plan has to be reviewed and stamped by a landscape architect before we sign off on the plans?
That's all I'm saying. That's all I've been trying to say.
So Mr. Silva can send over what he did, any minor modifications they need to make to it, they can, and it needs to be stamped and sent back to us before we sign the final plans.
And if they're not approved? Then what?
Well, then they'd have to come back to us for a minor modification. Right? So if they can't, if they're submitting something that doesn't comply, once they send it to a landscape architect, they have to come back to us to modify it before we sign it?
It's fine with me.
Sounds good to me.
Does that work, Mr. Silva?
That could have been down a half an hour ago.
Mr. Silva?
He's still muted.
Oh, there you go. I'm unmuted now. That's fine with me. I, I, that's fair, and I'm fine with it. If there is any comments from anyone that's in attendance, you might want to take that input just to make sure that if there's anything else that we need to put in it.
Can I just ask one question about the lights?
Go ahead, Mr. Green.
You said the lighting is adjacent to the driveway, but is it close to the street, not up at the house?
I think our regulations state 10 feet from the sidewalk. Is that correct? Green, I believe it's 10 feet from the sidewalk.
Because I know the error was made that other development.
We're going to make, we're going to make that a condition. And I, I have a proposed amendment to the currently written condition, so. Any other board questions before we open it up to the public for comment?
Good.
Mr. McDonald, is that you? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd just say I'm good, but I'm good to proceed. No questions?
Mr. Jimmy and Mr. Green, are you good?
Yeah.
Any public comment? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about this project? Or ask questions about this project?
Mrs. Mamadi had her hand raised, but it's not raised anymore. I don't know if she still has a question.
What was her name? If you could just say your name and address to the record now.
Oh, you're muted, ma'am. You're muted.
Okay.
Okay. My name's Anne Marie Mamadi. I'm at 60 Copperfield Drive in Bridgewater with the butter that has agreed to allow the, the grading. And I guess my questions were back on page three that you were showing the green areas. Is that new plantings or is that just leaving existing plantings?
I believe that was eliminated, Mr. Silva, correct? The 10-foot strip?
Yes, that was, on, on the other properties, other than where it had to grade onto your property, we were leaving a 10-foot strip where we would not be touching. But on your property, obviously, because the grading is going into it, that you don't have the green strip on that side.
Absolutely. No, I, I realized that afterwards. I, that was partly why I had my hand up to ask some of those questions. And, no, but I don't think I have any other, anything else to, to ask.
I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
Hi, I just had one more question that occurred to me. There was talk at one point of tying into the water main out front of Copperfield Drive and bringing that across to Seridum Way. I was wondering if there was a resolution to that. I know there was some discrepancy. Some people thought it would happen and some thought it wouldn't. And I didn't know if that had been finalized.
Mr. Antonero, I believe that a water line is going through to Copperfield to loop, correct? Do we have a plan we can show that on?
Sorry, what was the question, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Mamadi asked, just for confirmation, as to whether, whether or not the water main from Seridum Way would be connected to Copperfield through that easement? Was that resolved or was that, I believe it is, correct?
That's what they have to do. They have to loop the water through that. If, if that is not feasible, they're, they're proposing a loop to water main right now. So if, if that is not feasible, then it will be looped back onto High Street. But I believe, I believe, I don't have the plan in front of me. You have to look at the grading and utility plan sheet. That shows what a looping.
I don't, I have the small plan in front of me, but there's an easement on one of those lots that connects the 8-inch water main to
Yes. Copperfield. Yes, and you said the, the plan that was just up on the screen did show it. The water main is being looped over to, over to Copperfield.
How was the landscape plan? All right. Man, did that answer that question?
Yes, it did. Thank you very much.
And I apologize, Mrs. DeBoer, and I can't see anybody. So is there anybody else that would like to speak?
I don't see anybody else, Pat.
If we don't have any more board questions, there's no more public comment, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Green, second by Mr. McDonald. Any discussion? So I'll take the role. Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
And I'm yes. All right, so now let's talk about the project. So Mrs. Farinachi has provided us with a draft conditions. The draft, the list of conditions. Most of them are standard, but Mrs. Farinachi, the one I printed off, I talked to you about some updates today. I don't know if you made those updates or not.
Yes, those updates were made, Pat. I believe I said, I thought I had sent you that draft again, but I can send it to you right now if you need it.
That's all right. Can you pull it up?
It is on the screen right now.
Right, but I want to go to the first page. Out of the first page, you'll work through it. All right, can you scroll down a little bit? So one of the, so that five, that, the definition of, there's something like five parcels to nine buildable lots, and one lot was an existing single-family dwelling. Okay, so that was updated. Does anybody have any questions or comments on page one that they received? So now I think page two. So obviously, this will be updated. I guess once we receive the, how are we going to handle that? When I, we're going to receive the stamped landscape plan by a, by a registered landscape architect, so that'll have to be added, I guess, at some point, or or we'll have to figure that out. Or we made a condition, right?
It'll be made a condition, so it'll be part of the record documents, but it'll be a condition.
Page three. This is the analysis of all the lots. Does anybody have any questions on page three? Page four is mostly our standard conditions. Times, being certificates. Maximum dwelling units. All the way through 21 are basically our standard conditions. 22, let's look at item 22. So 22 is different than what I have sent out. What is that? So 21 became 22. All right, so 21, street trees shall be planted, shall, shall conform to the board's rules and regulations. That's standard. 22 is standard. 23 is pretty standard. It's a, 24 is where we start tailoring the conditions to this project. So are you comfortable with 24, Mr. Antonero? This is parcel A, which is going to be the nitrogen loading parcel. Shall remain, it should be open space in perpetuity, not in perpetuity. All right. And the ownership shall maintain with individual, once we're done, and shall be. Should there be any other language in there, Mr. Antonero, that it should be maintained in its natural state? So it doesn't get paved? So we don't want it paved or impervious or?
Right, right. No, no, it shall remain in its natural state without alterations.
So that needs to be added to 24. 25, is this something you worked on, Mr. Antonero, correct?
Sure.
You know what 25 says, Mr. Antonero?
I cannot see it clearly because I'm using my
Based on the gross square footage of the nine buildable lots and one lot containing a pre-existing single-family home, the nitrogen loading area of each lot should be developed for a maximum of three bedrooms. And this restriction of bedroom count must be placed on respective conveyance speeds and noted on each building permit and subsequent building certificate occupancy. Proof of conformance as a requirement in the form of recorded deed documents shall be submitted to the planning board before its release of the last two lots.
That is fine.
I'm fine with it. What happens if they forget to do it on 1 through 7?
No, because you're already requiring the recording for each lot. So, so that, that needs to be looked at on each lot.
All right, 26 streetlights will be installed as both lights at the end of each driveway per the subdivision rules and regulations. Any questions on that one? Prior to any site work, the grading proposed at 60 Copperfield Drive must be completed and inspected by the town engineer? Thoughts on that, Mr. Antonero?
We will be introducing you to the town engineer that will be responsible. So, so yes, it will be the town engineer reviewing and inspecting that. That's correct.
Right, but I mean, they're going to have to do a little bit of site work to get back there. I mean, so we're going to be reasonable with that, I'm sure, right? We just want it done before any work starts on any of the lots of the road. Any comments?
Including the grading work, right? On the, are you, are you talking about the grading on those lots?
We're talking about 60 Copperfield Drive, where we don't have, where we don't have an easement. We're just going off a notarized document. We want that done first, correct?
That is correct. That, that was the whole idea about, because the easement doesn't guarantee the work that will be done. So you want that work done before you, you actually allow any construction.
I believe you received that. I believe we received the notice, the notarized letter this afternoon. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, yes. In addition to that, you want that grading to actually be done as part of the preliminary, reflected on a preliminary street as built plan, so that you know that that work is actually done.
Yeah, so we have a condition that says prior to any site work, the grading proposed at 60 Copperfield Drive must be completed and inspected by the town engineer.
Fantastic. That, that pays care of that 100%.
And then today we received an notarized agreement from Silver Engineering allowing access to 60 Copperfield Drive.
Allowing access and doing the actual grading, not just allowing.
I, we, Robert Mamady and Anne Marie Mamady owners of 60 Copperfield Drive, Bridgewater, Mass., hereby agree to allow Joe Ruda of BRS to complete grading on our property as necessary and illustrated on the plan referenced above, which is also attached. Did you have any questions? Please call us.
So, I, I don't believe that has any legal weight, so I think we should, I like the condition that that it be done first. So that's good. Can we go back up to number 25? Mr. Farinachi? Which is, may not be 24. So this, existing, wait a minute. So, so I think we should put, based on the gross square footage, the nine buildable lots and the one lot containing a pre-existing four-bedroom, single-family home. Because we're basing everything off that being a four-bedroom. Okay. All right. So number 30. So we're going to change that to the, the, the plan, basically, we want to say number 30, Mr. Jimmy, and if you can help me with this, is that the plan submitted this evening is going to be put into a more formal plan by a landscape, registered landscape architect and stamped and submitted prior to the endorsement of the plans, correct?
Correct.
I'd say it'd be put into a more formal plan and reviewed and stamped by shall be reviewed and stamped by and shall be submitted prior to plan endorsement.
I just threw that one out there quickly when Jean had said it, so I'm sure you probably want to revise that language.
Which one, 31?
Yes.
I guess I don't know what it means.
Well, Jean had said we, there was another, didn't she say there was another subdivision where the trees were too close to the road or something?
No. Close to the house.
You, you can delete that because our regulations say where they need to be. Does anybody have any other conditions or questions on any of the conditions?
No, so, Mr. Silva has his hand raised.
Yes, if I could, if I could, if you could go back to number 20, 24.
The only question I have is, isn't the public hearing closed, Mrs.?
It, it is closed unless he has a clarification as the applicant. Can't offer new information, but he can clarify.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that on number 24, if you say to be kept in its natural state, that's contrary to the plan because we are, there is grade changes and it is being, you know, it's being, it's being worked, that area is being worked. So you can't say in its natural state. I think you say, need to say that it needs to go, return to a lumen seeded or something else, revegetated any disturbed areas, but you can't say natural state because then that doesn't work with the plan itself.
Well, I think, I think if it's an ancient putting castle, right, we don't want grass on it because somebody's going to fertilize.
You can say pasture grass, so unfertilize, you I'm just saying is you can't say natural state because there's actually grading changes taking place there. So you can't, that can't be natural state. So you can't, that can't be natural state.
So, to Mr. to Mr. to Mr. Jimmy's point, maybe that should be handled on the landscape plan, like you return it to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I just was concerned about having that language saying natural state or whatever it said.
Okay, so Mr. Antonero, we don't want. Fertilized on the nitrogen loading castle, correct?
I think the way you have it probably is okay, but there was some conversation about natural state. I think it's.
Uh, definitely, uh, Mr. Chairman, um. If you're there doing, you know, what? Uh, it's cool, give me a second, let me shake my, uh.
That was Larry.
I mean, I think the point of a nitrogen load, nitrogen parcel, if you look in the, the nitrogen loading regulations, is there won't be fertilizers on it, there won't be. Impervious areas, there won't be septic systems, things of that nature, so we want it to be. You know, either if it has to be graded, replanted with trees and and natural grass, I guess.
I don't know, he's, where do you go?
I I would say that it should be allowed, uh, as a project, allowed to go back to, um. A, a, allowed to go back to a natural condition, but not remain in its current condition. I guess that's all I'm saying.
So you're gonna put a state nitrogen loading restriction on the parcel, right?
Yes.
That's correct, but so.
Aren't there things that you can do and you can't do in that nitrogen loading restriction from the state?
That is correct. In in other words, um. He, they cannot, for example, you can't put salt there. You can't put a chemical, uh, uh, materials there. So, to your point, Mr. Chairman. The, any vegetation there must be done with the, well, so, to your natural state definition, that would be, for example, a screened loom. Uh, without any, uh, um, fast-growth. Materials, no grass planting, because to do grassing, sometimes you add additives to make it work, so. So your definition of natural state would include about to the extent possible, practical. The existing vegetation and where altered due to grading, uh, adjustments to match with the subject of proposal. Any plant in proposing that area shall only be supported. By natural loom, untreated loom. And untreated, uh, uh, vegetation.
Mr. Antonero, I agree with all that, but shouldn't we also be asking for a nitrogen loading restriction to be placed on that lot?
Well, you're already doing that.
But there's a state, when I've done a nitrogen loading restriction in the past, there's a state form that you go through with the board of health and everything, it all is also, it's a deed restriction on that land. For nitrogen loading purposes, and a lot that that clearly states what activities are allowed, not allowed.
Well, those restrictions, those restrictions that you are noting on that. Nobody will be doing anything with it. If it's noted, as we discussed, within restrictions, on the maximum number of lots to be developed, uh, number of bedrooms to be developed on each lot. Their deed restriction language covers that.
So the deed restriction is the nitrogen loading restriction, correct?
Correct.
The way you, the way you plan on handling that, Larry, is with a nitrogen loading restriction?
Larry, you're muted.
Uh, we already, uh, received an approval from the Board of Health for a restriction on that area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, the only other thing I did want to say is on number twenty-six, uh, I would not put the end of the driveway if what you want it to be is ten feet from the back of sidewalk.
Right, we didn't say the end of the driveway, we said, we said per subdivision, because it makes, and the, and the beach driveway should be removed.
Yes, yeah, and the beach driveway should be removed.
Mrs. Farinachi, can you remove that? And can we work with Mr. Antonero on some updated language? We don't have to work on it now, just before it's signed. About the natural loom and materials that need to be used on parcel A.
Yes, sir.
Jennifer, this is freezing on me, I'm sorry. I could certainly do that. It's gonna take me a second.
Just to take notes, then, Jasmine, I'll do it tomorrow.
Alright, is there any other board questions or comments on the draft decision line? That needs a little bit of tweaking still, though. We can get that done. If there's no board additions or comments, does somebody have? Uh, a motion to either approve or deny the projects with the proposed conditions?
I will make a motion to approve, um, Seredom Way. With the, uh, conditions as proposed tonight, with the couple of adjustments that need to be written in.
Do you have a second? Mr. Antonero, did you second that, or?
Yep, sorry, just having some audio problems here. Yep, second by me.
Alright, and before I sign it, um, I'll ask that the final decision letter be sent out to the entire board for comment, if there's any final comments.
Well, you can't make changes, Pat, once you vote it, so. The only thing you can make changes to would be spelling errors or things like that. You can't make actual changes to the decision once you vote it.
Well, we have to have, we have to have that worked out on item twenty, for those couple of things that we talked about. So Mr. Antonero has to add some language, wrote the natural materials and stuff like that, so, just be good for me to see that.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second by, um. Mr. McDonald, any discussion? I'll take the roll call. Uh, Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, while we were doing this, the Red Sox went down seven to nothing.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, seven to nothing. So something's good anyway. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, next up on the agenda, uh, it's a public meeting, we have a public hearing, we have a request, uh, for a modification for Old Field Estates. Uh, we received the letter from Attorney Caspino in regards to this. Um, there's somebody from staff wanting to give the board an update and. If Attorney Caspino is with us, uh, we can have him speak on behalf of it.
I think, uh, Mr. Antonero should give the update, he's on that, um. Notice the issue on site.
So I think we we go down this rabbit hole a lot. I think we should listen to. The applicant and staff, and then before we debate it, decide whether it's a major or minor modification. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's the first thing that you need to do, because if it's a major modification, it needs to be a public hearing, it needs to be advertised, and the letters need to be notified. So it doesn't seem prudent to have one discussion now, and then if you decide it's a major modification, repeat everything during that process.
So, uh, Mr. Antonero?
The normal course of, uh, the normal course of, of, uh, protocol, you have an applicant that submitted their, uh, modification. Yeah. Question, then I, maybe kind of, uh, open on the, yeah.
Attorney Caspino available?
He should be.
He is on, yes.
Lee, are you there? I see you, I don't know if you're. Uh, he's frozen, or?
He might be.
He doesn't seem to be moving.
I I can see his, I can see his chest rise and fall. I think, uh, I believe Mr. Caspino already fallen asleep during the proceedings.
Oh, my God.
That's a, that's a no one.
I don't blame him one bit.
Lee? Well, I'm not sure how you want to proceed if he's sleeping.
Yeah, you got me on this one.
I might be able to call him, I might have his number.
Well, while we wait for that, uh, Mr. Antonero, do you want, oh, he's coming in a different way, hold on. I have Azu introduce Greg for you guys, but he just walked away, so.
This probably could happen a lot. We should be able to poke people by some way. Something.
One of those air horns I could blow.
There you go. I don't blame him falling asleep.
Okay, um, so, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. After, um, uh, a long, just, um, process. Yeah, well, uh, I am finally, uh, happy to report to you. That we, the town has, yeah, the town engineer, Mr. Greg Tanzy from Rockland, Massachusetts. Uh, Mr. Tanzy, uh, joins the town with, uh, a wealth of, uh, civil engineering and environmental experience, uh, from, um. Uh, across a range of, uh, uh, companies, including, uh, Kendra Samaki Inc., um, which is now CDM Smith. Uh, right through his, uh, employ, last employment with the Ross Engineering. Of Noel, Massachusetts, where he was, uh, Director of Engineering Operations. Uh, Mr. Tanzy has worked with the land developers, applicants, banks. And actually has done extensive reviews for other municipalities. So, uh, we do have, uh, a very good, uh, engineer in Mr. Tanzy with over thirty years of experience. An engineering design, construction, management, and oversight work. So, uh, Mrs. Tanzy, welcome aboard, you can wave to the board, so that we will recognize you.
Thank you, Azu.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Tanzy.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here and, um, I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Antonero for, um, bringing me on board. It's been a very positive experience. The CED has a great staff and I, um, and and Mr. Antonero is. Um, just a, a wealth of experience and a, and a great mentor to me, and I just look forward to being a part, uh, of the team.
Alright. Thank you very much. Thanks, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
It appears that, um, Jasmine tried to call him and he didn't answer the phone. I'm not sure what you want to do.
I hope he's still, I hope he's still alive.
Michael says he sees him, his chest rising, so that's. A positive.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I don't think I have much choice on this one, yeah.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 And I mean, yes. Bye, everyone.
Alright.
Nice.